We've got six thirty, so we'll just get this meeting started here. Welcome to the March seventh City of Vermont City Council meeting. And first item after all agendas, see if there are any additions to the agenda. I would add for council members that are here to think about, one thing is not specifically on the agenda, but it is about a way to get Craig engaged with subcommittees and so on. So just ask you to think about that, you know, if there's something that you'd like to share committeeship with Craig or give up a spot, that's kind of what we're thinking about. We're not going to push you on the spot now, think about it, think about what would work well with Craig's expertise and things like that. So that's the only thing I'm going to add to discussion here. Chris and I didn't think we should just automatically pluck something and off, but let you think about which one to do up and that we can pass on to Craig to issue here.
So I have a question, is that pointed just to me or is that pointed to everyone?
I was pointing at Scott and Scott.
You were pointing at us and saying your name and I was confused.
Okay, thank you.
We typically have two representatives per committee assignment. We only, if you remember, we only put one individual on each committee until we knew Craig was going to be seated. And now if you have, if you have an individual assignment that you would like, that you were on before that you would like to be on, just reach out to Tom. Same with Craig, if you remember the panel list of the various committees, there's five of them. And see where you want to potentially hop in.
One of the best ones.
Each one of those ones juicy, probably personnel finance.
I'll look at these.
And for everybody's information, Paul is traveling from the UK. He's back a little more engaged with work and traveling, so that's where he's at tonight. I think they'll take care of the agenda additions, any communication, any rate of public here to address any particular topics.
I think we need to approve the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I will approve all the agenda.
Thanks.
I'll second.
Thanks Scott. I'll ready for the vote, I'll be approved of the agenda, all of your emotions, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, thank you, you have most caring. Now we're up to public comments, if anybody here wishes to speak to the topic at this point. Hearing now to take the role of the consent agenda, we had an opportunity to review it, are we ready to move on that?
Yeah, approve approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Thanks Scott, second?
I'll second, this is down.
Motion on the floor, move to second to approve the consent agenda, all of your emotions, please say aye.
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 All the caring, celebration of City of Vermont this fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, proposed budget. Chris, we'll move into public hearing and we'll go ahead and see if there's anybody here to engage on that topic. Chief, do you have anybody engaged electronically?
Not yet.
So I can't, I can't hear chief if he's talking, just FYI.
I have a mic.
Yeah, I just asked if there was anybody online that was, looked like they might be having some comments.
Yeah, Mark, Mark Andreessen's on, Laura's on, I'm on.
We officially have the public hearing open right now on the agenda, on the proposed budget. Long enough?
Do I need to make a motion to close the vote?
I think that would be appropriate, yeah. Staff is moved to close the public meeting.
I'll second that.
Second, Scott, close the public hearing, all of your vote on that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All aye, opposed, motion carries, and now we move on to G one. Resolution three dash seven dash twenty-two, twenty-two A, approve of City of Vermont's fiscal year budget. Chris, you sent out an updated.
I did send out an updated PowerPoint. I had three of them sitting on my desk and I grabbed around one after a meeting with Councilperson Ingle today. He pointed out, he cut off the light off two more, so I sent out some revisions. And he actually had a couple of good suggestions on adding page numbers and dates. So I've added that to the bottom. So new council, in the past, I put the PowerPoint together, asked you if you had any questions. If you didn't have them, it was kind of gone. I can do anything you guys put to me as far as PowerPoint is concerned.
I did have one question on page eight. As regards the public works, general expenditures for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three at zero dollars. Is that because they have their own line?
So most of, not all of their, their funding comes out of the enterprise money.
But I figured there's one of the expenditures.
If you, if you really look at how much general fund dollars the city receives, PD takes almost all of it.
Thanks for writing that for me, Scott.
Well, also helping with some services.
Well, right, and I figured the same reasoning, if it wasn't coming out of the general fund necessarily.
Yeah, if you flip to nine, between the enterprise, water, wastewater, because I'll give you a better snapshot of what we're spending on those particular budgets.
My question is on page nine, with the expenses. The LBC that Boris inputed out, is that total expenses for that building? Or is that debt of income from memberships?
You said nine?
Yes.
So that's, that will be expected expenditures.
Expected expenditures, not taking into consideration?
No, to be honest with you, we have yet to have what I would consider a normal revenue year. And if you remember, we extended and gave additional months per individual memberships and family memberships during the COVID period because we aren't officially open still. So this is going to kind of elongate, I would call paying revenues, not keeping up with expenditures on any basis. So my goal is to reduce the loss from the LBC yearly. I mean, so far, we're doing pretty good. So the first year, COVID year, we were closed three months, four months.
Four months.
And then we did over the first.
Yeah, it was half past, anything like that. So we, the LBC lost, you know, close to two hundred thousand the first year of operation. This year, my hope was that that two hundred thousand would become a hundred thousand. And so far, we're below that and hopefully we'll end up close to the hundred thousand. Next fiscal year, if I could have that one more time, I will feel pretty, pretty good about what we're going. Keep in mind, the way that that building was financed and the fact that we retained some of the office sales tax, probably the best decision the council made was to ensure that we had that fund available in case of something like this. I don't think we predicted COVID.
You mean five minutes after we.
However, we do have a little office sales tax money that has helped offset, helped offset those losses, which is, you know, a good problem to have.
Very true, we haven't had a period of good comparison year over year though, you know.
No, the last couple of months, I will say revenues have beat expenditures on the basis. Not January, February, March, that's kind of expected. One of the things that we're a little bit nervous about is because of the way that memberships were extended. Many of them are extended to April May, not necessarily the most ideal time to get people to renew an annual membership. So we've kind of taken a cautious approach to the fact that they may let it lapse for a couple of months and then start back up in September, October. So we're still, we're still at least a year away from what I would consider some of our normal operations there.
On what the basis, I watched another, in our expenses, who we give credits back to? And I believe there was just one this month, so that's trending up in comparison, so that's something that I watch. Chris, remind me, what are the revenue for the LBCs going to be for this year?
So. I mean, projected, we're between four and forty-four.
That's the revenue?
Correct.
And the cost to keep it open is four seventy-four?
That's the, that's the estimate as of right now is.
So it's getting close.
It is. The caveat to that right now is, is we haven't been able to figure out what our revenue base is for rentals. We've had, I think Matt has indicated, we've had three weekend, at least one basketball tournament that had the entire weekend. That was, you know, that was a quarter of the projected revenue for rentals in one weekend. So as COVID starts to hopefully continue to slow down and numbers continue to track the other direction and people feel more comfortable being in group settings, the expectations of the rental market will, will increase. In comparison, I believe moving forward, if we really wanted to, we'd probably rent every weekend. We still want to do that for memberships, so.
But that's a lever we can pull if we needed to.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I, because we're in such turbulent times and I imagine that the community will be asking some of those very same questions. Would it be worth having like a recap of the LBC operations like quarter over quarter, understanding that they're, they're odd, but at least so we're mindful of what we're doing? Because if I even look, and the reason for my question is, even if I look on page eleven of the PowerPoint, I can't see in this PowerPoint what the funding stream or what the revenue stream is for the LBC on, in the PowerPoint even. And I just want us to be mindful that it's a big deal to the community.
Yes, I mean, most definitely. We can, we can have that council, you know, as frequent as you like. I can ask Matt to put, you know, an update on, you know, every other month of his monthly report.
That would be good.
Kind of a financial background of where we're at for the memberships line. Everything is trending up, again, it's positive. It's just COVID costs us about three years of normalcy.
Sure.
And even if we knew that breaking even was a good goal.
Yeah. The establishment of my staff, the only thing I'd ever promise this council, future councils, that, you know, when a governing body, oh, it operates, anything of this nature, golf course, local center, breaking even is typically, you know, revenge.
Yep.
Yeah, the question for Chris, regarding to.
Not a question, just a statement of congratulations for our staff and frankly for council over the last couple of years. If we look at eighteen and page eighteen, just the financial health that the city finds itself in, the final point that based on how the state backed in all this together, our total capacity remaining for fiscal year twenty-three is almost fifty percent of what we could expect. So it leaves us a lot of room to deal with things like COVID and the ratio and whatever else may come out of the pipe. So just.
If there's a whatever else this year.
So, yeah, that was all, I just wanted to thank everybody for that. Thank you, there's a lot of work to remember and deal with the stuff that we have to deal with.
Well, under that same appreciation, and the fact that that tax levy is still stable at twelve ninety-nine, I mean, it is twenty plus years, right?
At least.
But that has not, I mean, I think it might be about twenty-three years now, isn't it, Chris?
I would have to pack it, it is over to one of them.
I just think that there's a lot to be said for that, that that levy has been stable for that long. And our citizens need to know that, you know, the tax rates are increasing because the value of the property is increasing.
There are nine hundred forty-one municipalities in the state of Iowa and we didn't grow a lot in this last census of the group. And that's more than eight hundred and seventy-five, we can probably say. So very good spot, as you mentioned, Scott, tax wise, and also the spirit of the community and the generally positive trend of growth. School district wants that, we want that.
Well, having said all that, I will move to approve Resolution three dash seven dash twenty-two, twenty-two A to approve the City of Vermont's fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three annual budget.
Is there a second?
I'll second, oh, go ahead. Yep.
That's great, move and second to approve Resolution three seven twenty-two, twenty-two A for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three annual budget. My last comment is that I like the format. I've been into the process a few years myself personally. We know what to look for, we know what the comparisons are to ten bigger, ten larger communities and so on. Good to have this format. Think we're in a vote on this resolution soon?
Wes?
Yes.
Ingle?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Chris, for putting this package together.
You as well, sir. I was going to say, I'll thank you.
And two is the approval of Platte Cornell College. This is probably the first step in a process for the school, in coming to us, school district. After we go through plenty of zoning, to look at athletic complex north of the high school. And at the last court of board meeting, they got the approval of fifteen yards, twenty yards width of a strip of land. That's what this next item is about, anything else to add there? Chris?
No, this is more or less what I'll call the land. So I did have somebody question the details of this fifty-foot strip. I don't know them. As far as the city is concerned, whether or not it's being donated or they've got some other arrangement between the two entities, I'm not a hundred percent certain, and it would be privy to my information. Our concern really lies with this fifty-foot strip, whether or not it meets city code. It does, the parcel letter on either side, lots of there on the other side are much larger than normal. So the point eight acres that is being transferred over is fully within the mind of your hand of the city.
Speaking to Sir Dan at Dayton, who was a few weeks ago, he was fully intended to pay market value for about eight ten seven or whatever, so assuming that's what happened, you're right, that's not business.
Yeah, I would assume so, but.
In that case, I mean, do we need to, all right.
It doesn't need to have a resolution in action, does it?
I'll approve of Resolution three dash seven dash twenty-two to be approving the Platte survey number twenty-five ninety-three, part of law one, Cornell College, second edition, and City of Vermont.
Thanks Scott, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Make it up. Any further discussion, further explanation, revote, please, sue.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes, thank God.
Yes.
Thank you. Know where our appropriations are all business, to motion for approval, the claim, the claims list this afternoon, I think was most recent one to sue, any questions on that? I'll entertain a motion then, Scott, second?
I'll second.
You're set. All of your emotions, the claims list is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second item is a placeholder for very COVID-related issues and policies, council action is needed. Do you think to add, Chris, I think you sent out the last numbers, I'm not sure you got sent this week yet.
I checked today, it was still at point eight-six. It's slightly odd, but.
I'm not hearing anything in the community. You tell us, I'm sorry, we need to keep having this as a placeholder, I'd say leave it on for a little while.
Yeah, I, you know, I think we'll leave it on here as a placeholder, because it's possible to discover we'll not have any placeholder. But we're only, I would say, two weeks removed from that number being, instead of being point eight-six, being hedging something. So we've had, you know, a solid couple of weeks here, but we were, we were at those numbers before they jumped all the way up to twelve and fourteen, you know, to send a J, so.
You have a question about that, although it's a leave it on the agenda, move on to number three. Especially in consideration of City Attorney Service, the council action is needed.
So I have the, another, I don't know why I did this, it is Brian Beggin, Simmons, Brian, not Brian Beggin. Every time I, and I've done that in a meeting with him too, I don't know why I get that name back in my head, but. So myself, Chief Shannon, and the mayor, we're the interview committee for City Attorney Service. So we had two responses to our request for qualifications. Brian Beggin, Simmons, Brian, Boyer Bergen, and Bob Haddlet, who's our current city attorney, was with him during that interview. Bob is retiring, semi-retiring, I'm not exactly sure. He did say that he would be available for consultation. And then Holly Orkery with Lynch Dallas, and then she's got a kind of a contingent here as well, but we're the other interviews. I don't want to speak for the, for the other two that were in the room. For me, it wasn't really even a close comparison per se. Lynch Dallas provides a better hourly rate for one, two, they have almost a, I'll call it a ten to one city representation. So I sent their brochure that showed you not only their city finances, but where they're consulted as well. So for us, like, for me anyway, it was a pretty cut and dry decision. I'm familiar with Lynch Dallas, they've been speakers at numerous meetings and I've seen managers' associations meetings. They're typically invited to go to their HR and I'll call them court cases of interest in the state of Iowa. They do a recap on annual basis. So with that, that is who we're recommending, and the mayor and chief China, if they have any other.
I'll go first and pass it on to you, the two reasons that I supported this question, Lynch Dallas was a reasonable one, but it wasn't even a financial one, but it was the one, the breadth of, the number of other communities similar to our size that is, Chris mentioned. Number two, the second point was the, in the RFP, having the weekly update, just like we get from personal with the basis. And what is weekly or every two weeks or every month, that's not as, I'm concerned about this, this status update that say, this is where this place is at, you know, with the police, and this is where this place is at with the police, and this is where. What's something else, plus the breadth of coverage would help with Lynch Dallas, which we are to, if it's a legal thing on personnel, maybe a different person has expertise in that area, even though Holly's a mayor partner or some, whatever that category is, there's enough other experts within the firm, but I think we get a full, good legal team representation from our spouse. Don't you think that would be helpful?
I would obviously just echo what both of them have said. It was very clear from my perspective as well, Lynch Dallas is very well suited. The amount of city government exposure versus between the two was substantial here. It was one of the key factors for what I, what I saw from that perspective, I have no doubt. And either team's abilities to handle what the police department would need from that perspective. But I think, you know, just the caveat of what their expertise and what they're doing in the field is going to be well served for the City of Vermont.
I see, I've got one question, just out of curiosity, and this is just a lack of knowledge on my part. There's a map in the materials that we were given that delineates cities you represent versus cities you serve as a city attorney. What's the difference between those two?
Sure. Hi, I'm Holly Orkery. So the difference is sometimes we'll be engaged just to do only HR or personnel matters. Or Steve will be engaged, for example, to do more complicated nuisance matters in certain cities. So he'll do those, and they may have just a more global city attorney that handles day-to-day or, you know, prosecution tech or. It's normal.
So represent would be kind of one-offs versus city attorney and so on, I mean, not, just to dumb it down.
I'd say it'd just be more subject-based. So we have a continuous, a continuing relationship with them, but we only, we're limited in the scope of representation to a certain subject or level.
Yeah, exactly, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
How about you're just everybody and like what your dishes are, just a specific.
Very good. So I'm Holly Orkery, I do a lot of human resources and personnel, I do open records, any construction matters from time to time, open meetings, we have things that remain that legally direct in my day. Steve, why are you here? My law partner, he does everything I don't do usually. He does real estate transactional work, a lot of nuisance work, six, seven days, certainly missing.
Contractor, you pretty much day to, most day-to-day type of things that aren't labor and employment or open meetings and records.
And Dan Harmon, right up here, he does a lot of different things. Dan is a, you've been with us for four years now?
No, you guys are sort of, but practice.
For three years now, so he's starting to find his, the things he might like still and getting exposed to them. But he does a lot of excessive force work, defense of that, we have a whole niche of that. And then he does a lot of work with police departments and does prosecutions, he does nuisance work, he does labor and employment with me, and he may reserve our firm. And then Tristan is one of our newest lawyers, and I just wanted to bring him out so everyone would know his face if he were to ever be involved in a matter of Tristan, Tristan, what do you do? He does everything, he does everything right now, he's still doing what he likes.
Exactly, anything that comes my way, I'm willing to help with and I'm willing to, you know, reach out to talk to anyone or answer questions that come my way as well.
So, yeah. We, Phil Stone, who I've heard, he does excessive force, police defense, and labor employment, he may reserve his labor employment. Paddle Paddle does literally everything you could ever want. So we have a good team, we're really excited about this opportunity.
You have a question?
I do have a question, you mentioned the regular status reports and I like the idea of that too. Is the intent for those, for you guys to share, you know, cases of legal precedent or, you know, things that you feel that are relevant and you should know about from a collective stance? Or what's the intent?
So, just want to make sure I understand. Our status update would be a table essentially that would tell you the ongoing matters, who's assigned that matter, and what they're doing on that matter.
You're talking about, we have specific.
Not party matters. We also.
Ideally, we're not getting any of those, right?
We don't have to say that personally, but you said. We do client alerts, although we do, I do those to Chris still pretty regularly. But those, you know, with COVID was going on, if there will be a big case that comes down, we will send out client alert updates that let people know, hey, you should pay attention to this.
That's great, thank you.
During the review process or after the review process, I know, aren't there some cases, Will, that we, I think the question came up, should I be copy-dating on that? And I think I said no, because some of these issues may be HR-related where.
And I think I said no, because some of these issues may be HR-related, where it's not appropriate, and be, it would be incorrect to be involved with that process from the very, from the very beginning, so, if you're asking the question about point of contact, this is Chris, and, and I don't think me or I should be involved with that, unless it gets to the point where you figure it needs to be.
So the, um, it tends to be too full, HR's probably work is the most wonky in that, um, especially if it's dealing with the department head. They have appeal rights to this body, um, so, a lot of what Holly shares, because I've been putting to the table before, is, it's just more of a status update. Who we're at, this is, um, who's technically working on that, uh, what we're waiting for, it holds them accountable, holds my staff accountable, especially if they're waiting no documents from us. However, I mean, it's privileged information, you're a part of the city, so you're welcome to that information. Whether or not it didn't have, sending that to you every Friday, I think it kind of depends on what we're looking at, so if it's, for instance, if it's nuisance-based, because a lot of people talk to you versus talking to me, then I have no problem, you know, forwarding that on to you, just so you can see where, where that, where is that in the process. On the flip side, I would prefer, you know, if you have individual questions about cases, like you, you can put them on. But I, again, I will, when they're sent, they're really documents anyway, so when they're sent, I will order the first few on to you, probably just so that you're aware of what we're receiving and what we're seeing. And that is personal, I mean, I really don't have a problem, there's, you'll notice when you get these tables, there, there aren't, um, significant tidbits of information that are, uh, going to be shared, they're, they're extremely cautious about what they, what they put in this table, it's more like a status update, but, it does provide you a picture, similar to my, my Friday notes, here's what we did this week, and then here's what's going on, if you have any questions or concerns, this is what we're looking at, so.
Put a big J in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, no mistakes, yeah. Sounds good. Good, thank you.
This is, any further questions, Holly? This is, I believe we need a question for approval here, any further questions?
Go ahead and move approval of, uh,
retaining.
Retaining, uh, Lynch Dallas as the city attorney, as the city of Iowa.
You have a second there? Great. Last call for any questions, comments? Would mention that, um, this is not something we change, this is not a relationship change that we both do very frequently, and that's good, you know, it's data, this is not an annual, annual RFP process, this is a lot of, a lot of this process.
I think we've been almost ten years.
And that's, rightly so, but, um, there's time to learn the market, I think, did the right way, RFP process, and did the right process, and a good spot here, so. Motion on the floor to approve Lynch Dallas retained services, Lynch Dallas for our city attorney services, all taken motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Deb. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And four, special consideration, design services for pool feasibility study, council action is needed.
So we have, we have a total staff shortage today at the LBC, so I wasn't able to send anything over. We did hold interviews on Friday, second interviews for two, uh, two of the consultants, because again, um, I think it was a process well served, it wasn't even close. The preparation for the second interview, uh, was night and day amongst the two, two groups, and Waters Edge, kind of grew the competition out of the budget. So Waters Edge is partnering with OPM Architects, OPM, if you remember, was the original architects on the LBC. Waters Edge would do a line share, the feasibility studies, OPM would probably come in on a consultant basis, if, you know, the recommendation were to be an indoor or a part of the existing LBC, so, three, three of the four organizations or groups that we were looked at were all in the range of about 50,000. Now, this is strictly looking at feasibility of, do we replace what we have as a, you know, are we capable of renovating the existing facility? I think we know the answer to that, but, you know, they're going to go through that process. And then, where do we go from here, if that's not feasible, do we look to rebuild or build new, uh, an outdoor facility? Do we look at an indoor/outdoor facility, do we look at strictly an indoor facility? One of the things that Waters Edge, one of the intriguing things that Waters Edge put up on the board on Friday was, how they estimate expenses, and they've been doing it a long time, but they will provide us tables. Here's your estimated revenue based upon the family bass, single basses, how many individual basses you sell in a day. Here's the cost based upon, and they provide you a map, like there is all out here, here's your employee costs, water loss, all of that, so we'll have a fairly good idea. I'm going to say losses, I don't know that there are probably less than 1% of pools in Iowa actually make money in a year, and that might issue be high. So, I think really the realistic thing is that it's an amenity, because the, the patron of this community choose to have, it is an amenity that comes nine times out of ten in a loss. And so, I'm excited. When we first started talking about the LBC, and Deb can chime in whenever, uh, we, we took the pool off the table because it was clouding the overall conversation of the wellness center. And what we said was, we would design the building, with the option or the capability of being a standalone facility, or adding on a potential, you know, future favorable group. When I first walked through the door, I, I said I'm not the kind of administrator that's just going to, to sit and let this thing kind of stew. So here we are, this is basically, we need to find out what, what we can afford, what needs to be done. With all the problems that we had with the pool last year, I wouldn't say that we have a long time necessarily. Make some, some major decisions, and, and what that looks like will all depend on the council moving forward, but I do believe Waters Edge and the personnel that they brought were, probably got there to get us there.
Where is Waters Edge located? Where does it happen?
It's in Missouri. Same as we've seen.
Where is OPM? Are they also in Missouri?
Uh, no, they're actually in Zera.
But, but they're, they're a regional firm as well, they have locations other places as well. So I do have to say, first of all, I am sorry, I had technology issues on Friday, so I couldn't join the, the second interview process. But even based on the first interview process, I would, I was very, I was having a hard time not just saying, let's move on and select Waters Edge and, OPM, I think they are best suited for, uh, the task at hand, and I feel very confident in what they're going to bring forward to our community. Very well thought out, uh, OPM has numerous individuals that live within our community, and they've been engaged in community activities, at, uh, with, within Mount Vernon, the high school, the, um, LBC to, for example. So I, I feel confident with this process moving forward, um, I'm very excited to see what they come up with, because, uh, it, it is going to be a challenge, uh, and, and they were very upfront about that in their presentation, about what challenge we're actually facing. So they're, they're very well aware of what they're getting to here.
Waters Edge is probably wise to align with an architectural partner, and they're probably wise to align with OPM, but is there going to be a bias towards building new because it's OPM, it's their building?
No, so, I, I guess from technical standpoint, Waters Edge would leave permanent, and to be honest with you, they win either way. Whether or not it's.
Without architecture.
Yeah, renovation, so they're, they are the, the pool engineer slash design group. OPM is here in case they need transition to that indoor facility. The other group that we interviewed was Councilman Hunslinger and MSA, so, I don't know that there was one firm that, that we interviewed that had just one group that didn't have a sub, I think they all.
Oh, they, they all partnered with an architectural partner.
Yeah, so it's just, um, to be truthful, there were, there was, there was one firm that submitted that said they could do both. And, and.
And we threw them out before we even got down selected.
So, um, I, I'm grateful that all of the organizations understood that they have limitations in both design and expertise. Waters Edge, when you talk to them, are, are cool. That's what they do, uh, they don't design buildings, and, um, one of the things that I think, again, from a, from the standpoint of what we are looking at doing here with the pool, the community feedback, uh, all of the information that needs to be taken in, that's where Waters Edge shine the most. I, I think when you, uh, Deb, I'm trying to blank on her name.
Oh, gosh.
When you, when you meet her, you know, I think you'll have the same feeling that both Deb and I had, I think Deb and I were both on Waters Edge and I after the first interview, um, and then after the second, it was, it was a valid question.
Right, right, and, and I would have to say, um, the reason for the second interview was the committee needed to feel confident and reflect upon what they heard to be able to ask more insightful questions in the second interview. And, and I think that was a, it was a good process, and, and now the committee is engaged and confident that they chose the right partner as well, rather than Chris or I driving, driving the, uh, the selection.
And Deb, who was on that committee?
Oh, Katie was on there, um, Paduska.
Kathy, isn't that?
Kathy, yes. A gal that lives down by the pool.
She's also on. She works, work right now, she lives.
Yeah, she does, Jo, Jo. I think she is, I think she is. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared with names.
No, I'm sorry, yeah, no, I was just curious. There was, uh, it was basically five, Max, Sarah, Katie, and then myself, Deb, and two, two partners.
Two other community members.
During the course of the feasibility study, did we encourage them to engage in Cornell?
Yes.
We did, they actually brought it up as well in their own presentations unprompted.
Since Cornell is not in the pool, it's not going to break even.
I, I have a different take, you know, Cornell and, and the city are both on the same side of this table, pointing fingers, hoping that the other would take it.
And honestly, that's where it was with the LBC too, because that was the whole discussion there.
We will have to engage Cornell, we will have to engage this school. Especially when we, when we have a discussion on, on the indoor, if, if there's an indoor component to it. Because that, that goes back to financials. Swim teams, whether or not Cornell has a program or, or, you know, use of the, the facility, could make or break whether or not an indoor facility, you know, moves reasonable enough to make us comfortable. I would say without those two organizations, having an indoor facility will be extremely difficult.
Thank you. So I assume we'll get.
So basically, you are, we're granting staff permission to negotiate a contract with Waters Edge and OPM, the contract will come back to council for approval by the future date.
Gotcha.
And when I say, I use the term negotiate loosely, it's an AIAA contract, so they're, they're pretty established. I think the term is, we'll review that, of course.
Did we be involved at this point, or do we feel like?
No.
That's our.
I think the community has to be involved at this point, because the community has to, A, understand the feasibility of a project, what it costs to construct the project, and what it costs to run the project. Without the community buy-in for all of that, then it becomes more difficult, keep in mind that, unless we go in urban or the old route, this is going to vote with OPM, you know, given the scope of the product, so, if the, if the community is not involved from the very start, and I think a, a vote, um, a potential tax increase, or whatever it looks like in the future, becomes the next to impossible.
First staff recommendation.
Oh, I was just going to say, that was one of the, uh, the initial discriminating factors, is that method of community engagement that was proposed by each of these suppliers. So in, in my mind, uh, that was, that was a discriminating factor that led towards Waters Edge and their approach.
Okay, thanks, Deb.
There'll be a website.
Yeah.
There, there'll be a number of things that they, they put on the table that I think, were encouraged to keep the community involved.
And they probably have, you know, a communication strategy that they've put in the past, or something similar, that, and experience with that, is there?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, and they provide it with a lot of examples, but, make no mistake, this project scares me more than any project that you asked me to move forward. From, from the perspective of.
The emotion?
Cross-generational, um, emotion, opinion, uh, there is not a bigger project in this community, and I mean that literally, that, uh, people will want to be involved.
Well, the pool that we currently have was built 15 years ago, so if we think about it like that, what we're doing, you know, I mean, not to put too much point on my grandeur, but, so, just saying. Uh, having said all that, unless there's further discussion, I would move approval of moving forward with Waters Edge and OPM as subs, as recommended by the committee.
And I'll second.
Take Deb for that. Got Deb? Council action is needed here, and proving to be an artist and just a design consultant for a pool feasibility study, all taken with that motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Waters Edge and Evans, five session consideration, please pay the purchase, this will be your 1223. Chief Shannon, give us some information on hybrid a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you, counsel. Yeah, that was some good information we received, a whole thousand miles into our vehicle so far. We anticipated to get a few more, a little more history with it before coming back for our second request, but delays with delivery, there's delays with installation, there's delays with getting everything up and running, it took about eight weeks to get the installation done, which is about six weeks longer than usual, from that standpoint, but promising to use so far for the hybrid portion for us, the performance has been great. It's a little weird to drive, as you get in it, turn the key on, there's no engine noise, and you move, um, from that standpoint, which is odd for us from that perspective. Took a little, acclimated from that standpoint, but I think it's going to work out well. I asked Chris to bring this forward to you, because Lynch has notified me as well, that the delivery time is running 30 weeks right now, before we can get our next squad car for ordered. And the other side of that was, if that was with for two weeks ago, since that time, since I gave it to Chris, I was notified a shutdown of 22 production, and so now we're in this, this window of limbo, waiting, um, before the 2023 prices come out, so we can purchase the next vehicle from that standpoint. So, I would still encourage counsel to review how the, the purchase agreement that we have, I know in past history that we've always dealt with Lynch, they follow state bid pricing for us, they give us as good of a deal as we could get from that standpoint, and definitely thin margins that we do for by local portions from there. I don't anticipate a huge increase. I don't anticipate a huge increase, um, from the 22s to the 23s from that standpoint. The good news is also I anticipate being able to pull this stuff out of the old vehicle, which is to be the first year in this transition because the body style changes that we may be able to pull some of the equipment out of the old squad car and that end of the news for some cost savings there as well. So, um, I would move forward, again, just request to get the purchase as soon as we can get it ordered, um, as soon as we can so that we can start our revenue countdown.
Probably speaking, new squad off the mark, off the lots, equips. Hover the record around 65,000. Those pre-COVID numbers. So our hope is that we're, you know, be able to keep that number fairly close. But regardless, unless there is catastrophic increase, let's be back to this instead of, um, you know, there's a 20% cutoff. We need to continue the fiber rotation and making sure that, uh, the squads get replaced every five years. The instance that we don't, um, you become a city that is looking to go out and actually borrow money for an eight-year period for a five-year vehicle. And I want to stay out of that cycle if it's possible. So, uh, we're asking, obviously, the council to know that we're going to have to purchase vehicles. And again, if there is a catastrophic increase, we would run that by you before we could.
And 60, 65 ranges of vehicle and the outfiting costs that we're going to that from that standpoint. So getting it from Lynch to a full functioning police car from, from that standpoint.
How many cars do you guys see this in the figure?
We have, uh, six cars total, right down, one specific for a K9 car, we have the unmarked car and then four patrol cars.
So you guys prescribe one a year, basically?
Yes, since with the Lisbon transition, um, that kind of pushed that issue in a little bit. Before that, we would buy one for two years in a row, then maybe have a gap and then continue on from that. So that gap is kind of closed now and it's pretty much just a five-year rotation for the vehicles as we go through. Two, two vehicles that we do have, the unmarked, which is the one I primarily drive in the daytime, the K9 vehicle is a single vehicle operator. Those vehicles generally we can get probably seven, eight years out of those, um, by the time we go because it's the other, all the other vehicles are two assigned officers per vehicle. And when one of those are down, something, if there's an issue, um, mechanical issue or something like that, then they're doubling up. And the other ones, we've had situations where they're running 24/7 from that standpoint. I was most impressed with the gas savings on hybrids so far. Um, it's using half the amount of vehicle of the other ones so far. Um, but I had a pre-conversation before the meeting with Tom too, is the, the risk factor that I don't know yet is what the mechanical pull-up is going to be for that five-year period.
Well, I've had my hybrid SUV for seven years.
Perfect. I hope that continues to be, and I'll knock on some metal here to keep that all in the house. I, I've been very impressed with it so far.
Great. I would like Deb for selling off. Did one of you get the call?
Yes, yes, we will, we will depart with those. We are actually waiting on, one of the ones we acquired from Lisbon. Long story, we're waiting for the title for that vehicle so we can partner with that one as well. It's sitting in the garage, not being used currently. Um, but yeah, we will depart unless there's a, uh, need that arises before then as discussed. But most of the time, you know, we, we pretty, we'll sell those. Uh, the last one, we actually got five, a little over five grand for it there.
And we give more than a million dollars service at one point.
We did, we did.
We've been waiting, uh, so we sold, we anticipated getting a title to the, the vehicle upgrade retained from Lisbon sooner. So we sold the other city vehicle, um, the other four, for five grand. We can't purchase the next, um, I'll call it employee transit car, um, until we get the other one sold. So we're just waiting on that title and then, um, with council not settled on, and actually we said we could still figure out how much we have, um, kind of as a trade-in and determine. Right now, I, I would say we probably will look at purchasing a brand new vehicle. I mean, uh, trying to buy used vehicles.
We're spending on the same one.
So, yeah, uh, F450 that we just sold, sold $20,000. The hot market went after that.
We need to raise the price a little. Any other questions, Chief Shannon? Are we moving forward on this?
I'll go ahead and move approval of the, uh, purchase of the new police vehicle. Do we want like a net to exceed on this, Chris, or?
Um, like I said, I think we're, we're aiming for a total, uh, equipment price of 65,000. I would say probably within two to three percent of that number, just give it us a little bit of leeway. But again, uh, if it's going to be much more than that, then we have that in the question.
Well, just as you just said, if it's 65 fully loaded and you're gonna get 15,000 or 10,000 for a trade-in, it's not gonna be 65.
Correct.
So.
We'll probably get 5,000.
It's hot out there right now.
I would say it's 65,000. If we only get a fully loaded for that.
All right. So I move approval of, uh, purchasing the new police vehicle, net to exceed more than, uh, three percent plus or minus on 65,000.
So can I, can I add something to your, um?
Can we have a second? And then we'll have discussion.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll second. Okay, so I was gonna say 65,000 net of trade-in.
I would amend my movement. Motion, yes.
Catch all that, Sue?
Yes.
Pretty careful. Yes, they're slipping out.
Thank you.
Can you read the motion back to us then? Seriously, we got motion on the floor to, uh, continue the process of, uh, purchasing the police vehicle for, for the next 30 weeks, 2022, 2023, fiscal year. Ready to vote on all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Both? Which are curious, we're just.
Can't wait to see the minutes.
Two discussion items on.
They'll be perfect.
They're all in fond application on water meters.
So this is more just an FYI, um, just a reminder that in, in order to keep our capacity where it's at and minimize hopefully barment that this next fiscal year, depending on the project space that we do, we filed those to tend to take out an SRF loan, which is basically, uh, a loan on water revenue. It's got a 20-year life, um, it's through the state of Iowa. So, um, just a lot of perks to, to going this route. And then we would retain the art funding for renovations to this facility. The art funding is not going to complete the entire renovation here, but it, I want to say about 75 to 80% of the necessary amount. That, again, then frees this council up to, to sit here and decide how much we want of art, what projects do we want to get done. All with the knowledge that, um, we have two rather large projects lingering. One is first street in the downtown and the second is the pool. So we'll have those discussions throughout the next fiscal year.
Art funding would have funded 60%, 65% of our meters?
Um, it was probably a little higher than that. Granted, this was pricing news almost a year ago, but for a full AMI system, they were between 750 and 800.
Is that system to, to do the installation process? Is it still going to involve third-party installer going into each individual residence that has a water meter?
Correct.
How long would it be in each house?
Um, good question.
So.
I don't want that to be a deal killer, but will it be a deal killer for some people? I mean, we, it's for the greater good that we are headed in this direction. And this is a system change that's gonna be lasting for 50, 70, 80 years.
Yeah. For newer modern houses with modern plumbing, um, it could be as quick as half hours to an hour. For those that live in a house like mine, uh, it could be half a day. They, their goal is to, I think last time I talked to them, have anywhere from three to four crews working basically Monday to Friday, uh, changing out meters. So Lynn just went through this process, Iowa is going through this process, Cedar Rapids is going through this process. So just depends on the number, but we have roughly 1,300 meters, give or take. Again, if they go down and the meter is readily accessible and they can, um, have a, a little for the reader, so they're similar to those that have the metering right now. There's a little black kind of circle box on the outside of the house. That's essentially what a meter will, will be. Um, the only difference is from time to time they'll have to change out the batteries in those meters. So, yeah, I would say anywhere from an hour to a half a day to be with them. Then they're gonna come here and tell me, hey, do you enjoy medicine? So we'll see.
But we'd rather tell people an hour and have it take 20 minutes.
Yes.
Any other questions, Juan? Otherwise, keep the process, keep her going. I think we're committed to it.
And just to review, these are the full, we don't have guys right around the trucks on these, right? These will be, this will be the full system. Has radar read off the tower?
So it will be a radio read off the tower, a little light maybe, um, at least one headshot to, uh, what I'll call booster stations, just given the, the elevation change. Again, going back to the whole COVID conversation, if prices have been driven up, then this capital has the decision, do we continue with the AMI system or do we go to the AMR system, which is the remote read through a vehicle? Really what you lose there is just the frequency at which it can be read and then water loss. So it limits you to being able to have detection. You do have to drive the community on a daily basis.
Yeah, and it's, those guys fine, just driving.
Correct. Now, most systems obviously get us, get us out of a week worth of metering. So.
Anything else you need to hear? Uh, reports of air council administrators, uh, eight, eight of the city council members. Deb weighed in on some of their committees already with, uh, pool study. Anybody else?
So I have a question, Chris, on the, um, oh, the city administrative report. When you, when you meet with those, uh, the, the representatives from the Humane Society, is it, is it worth getting, uh, their input on this decline thing that's been brought to our attention? Or maybe you did. I'm sorry, I'm just now seeing the date. It's passed.
Uh, so, yes, this was a, a fairly specific meeting, uh, as it related to some events that have occurred in the last two months. We, I'm more than happy to give their, their opinion. We, we actually did receive some opinions just today, uh, that would be counter to the whole ordinance of that nature. So, um, yeah, I, I definitely would welcome. There, the, the only thing I would say to that, Deb, is, is, um, I think their director does a fairly good job of, of giving information to and from the city, but they are pretty short-staffed, mostly volunteers, so.
Sure. I would, I was just curious if it was a, a way to gather information that doesn't have so much, um, uh, emotion around it.
Absolutely.
Good question, Deb.
And I'd like to, I'd like to bring to everyone's attention the fourth bullet on his report and remind everybody how big of a, a deal that is. We were up against communities that are multiple times larger than ours. It is a huge, huge honor to be selected as a finalist for the GAMS Award.
And Joe, Joe, pretty humble about it, but I would agree with that.
It's huge. It's huge.
It's a really big deal.
Not only the size, but having been to that award before and seen some of the, the money that is piped into some of these communities that, you know, we don't necessarily have. And, you know, it's pretty amazing what that brought.
Right. I, I have to say that Mount Vernon epitomizes what a Main Street community is supposed to be about. It's supposed to be about volunteerism. It's supposed to be about doing the best for your community with, uh, that volunteer hour that you have, where, like Steph said, the amount of funding that some of these other communities have is extraordinary. So, um, it, it, it will be an, an honor to, uh, to represent the community in, uh, let's see, that's May, when we go.
Is there a question for these people?
I was just gonna ask. I think Joe was gonna.
It'll be on the front page of the Sun this week.
Perfect.
Hey, just the, the emails with all of the information that he was providing inside to us last week, so anyone that did it can refer.
Joe Jensen is definitely an asset to our community in that role.
Unbelievable.
Wise to get involved with this association a decade ago and it was wise to pick Joe Jensen to lead this association a decade ago. I think we're getting close to German here, but I need to, uh, act on with Deb's thanks to Joe, but I wanna end the meeting with a thank you and this one is to Alvin Downs. Because Alvin, I think a couple of months ago, we got a calendar of the safety topics that public works people are having. And, uh, the usual safety topics you would expect, like, uh, you know, basic first aid, uh, basic electrical, uh, you know, dealing with workplace habits and things like that. But I was impressed with, uh, workplace violence and active shooter. That's a topic of mine. It doesn't have a whole lot to do necessarily with fixing a, a water break in the middle of winter. Um, diversity and inclusion, um, and the one that I caught was mental health in the workplace. And I'm thinking, and I had a view of this facility with, uh, the staff, all work staff, all the staff. I think the officers were here in Tacoma and, um, seriousness with which they took the topics. And the topics are, are, are global in that nature, not just involved with their day-to-day activities in public works. So it had there, it helped me with that. So that's what I was gonna end with. Um, is there anything else that needs to come before?
I have one item. Just so everybody's aware that Shakespeare in the Park is set to return this year. I was asked specifically whether or not, you know, council needed to vote on this again. I determine that not technically. I, I think if they're going to, you know, elongate the period of time, especially when utilizing Memorial Park or, um, something drastic from one year changes to the next, as long as park directors board is, is on board and staff is okay with the timing. I see this more like our, our Toonful Tuesday operation, just kind of a, a standing, I'll call it standing reservation in the park. But this, this program is so well-received last year, uh, a welcome distraction to all of the, the COVID experiences. So, um, excited to have them back. And again, if, if you want, um, Mount Vernon Lisbon Community Theater to come to council to make some presentations, he definitely will, but I just, I think as well, as, as it was received, I think we'll move forward.
Any quick consensus here? Agreed. Agreed.
I agree.
Because they do it this summer, and that's also the use of gazebo. People want to get married on the 2nd, so they better reserve a mat pretty quick.
The only other thing I have is I'm really not a part-time employee, you know, March makes it seem. I will be out of this state starting Wednesday. I will be back Tuesday. And then I am a board member for Iowa City Managers Association, so I have to be in Iowa City Wednesday through Friday next week for municipal managers institute.
This is the Confluence meeting that's set?
Yes, they haven't sent me the time, and they were putting an informational flyer out. As soon as I get it, then I will have Laura get it out via social media and the sun. But I will tell you that Wednesday following spring break, I'm not sure exactly what the date is.
23rd?
Yeah.
Or the 30th?
No, 23rd. Did not go as far as the 30th. So as soon as I get a press release from Confluence, then we'll do that information out to the public.
Great.
I got an email reminder to speak for Green America, or Green America or Morris on here, but down. This is with regard to a community-wide sustainability audit, beginning with a greenhouse gas study and so on. So we're gonna move that process along too. I'll let you know about that.
It's a partnership with you.
Any else that needs to come before this council? Very none. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.